We're here beforehand, and I'm sure we'll hang around afterwards too if there are other questions either related to the project in general outside kind of the scope of the supplemental DEIS. Individuals have up to two minutes to give their presentation tonight. If you're representing a group or organization, you can speak for up to three. We'll have somebody keeping time here, and we'll try to keep people close on time as best we can. There'll be little one-minute, 30-second reminders when your time's getting close to be up. And let's see here. I will call, I think what I'll do is I'll call up two names so that way the person who knows that they're next can get ready to speak. And with that, we will just jump right in. The first person on my list, and I'll do my best to pronounce names, don't hold it against me if I mispronounce it, Russell Palma, and second person is Representative Frank Hornstein.
Hello, I live in the Calhoun Isles condominiums. These historic rain silo buildings lie closest to the Southwest LRT along its entire route with a proposed shallow tunnel coming within two to three feet of the building's foundation. I'm concerned about Southwest LRT's impact on the building's contiguity and livability issues once the light rail is up and running regularly. The SDEIS identified that there are 36 groundborne noise impacts on our condos and leaves mitigation plans for the final DEIS. In the push to cut costs, I'm worried that mitigation plans could be curtailed or eliminated. I know that in the building of the Green Line at the University of Minnesota and Minnesota Public Radio, the light rail lines were built in such a way so as to minimize vibration effects. Although these efforts have not been completely successful, we respectfully ask that our homes be given equal consideration. If the residents of the Calhoun Isles condominiums are asked to sacrifice by having the Southwest LRT operating within the feet of our building and to put up with two years of construction, noise, congestion, and inconvenience in our backyard, I ask that the Met Council of the City of Minneapolis at least do everything within their power to mitigate the long-term effects on our homes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And you did a very good job of this, but I was asked to remind people to just speak slowly and clearly. We're trying to type down and take for the record everything that's said tonight, so just, I could just ask folks to do that and also make sure to state your name when you come up to give your remarks. Representative Frank Hornstein, and next is Sarah Brenner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Met Council members. I am Representative Frank Hornstein, and I represent District 61A of the Minnesota House of Representatives. And I apologize if I'm meant to run out, there was a long scheduled forum on freight rail safety issues in northeast Minneapolis that I'm speaking at, and that actually is very much related to the comments I want to make tonight. I've been working very hard over the last year and a half on the issue of freight rail safety, particularly as it relates to the transportation of Bakken crude oil and more recently ethanol. Thanks to citizens in my district who brought to my attention the dangers of ethanol also being very, very important for the state to address, we were able to update some of the oil transportation safety legislation that we passed last year to include ethanol and other hazardous materials. The reason I bring up ethanol is that this is really a very, very dangerous item that is being now transported through the Kenilworth corridor. When co-location was foisted on the City of Minneapolis, as was pointed out, was not part of the original plan and one of the three areas that needed to be examined in a supplemental DEIS. This issue was very much not as much on the public radar as it is now. We have had many accidents involving Bakken crude oil and several involving ethanol just over the last year and a half, including an ethanol train that exploded and burned and landed eventually in the Mississippi River not too far away from here in Dubuque, Iowa. So the dangers of transporting oil and ethanol are real and unfortunately were not addressed in any meaningful way in the supplemental DEIS. And I would implore you and urge you to take this issue very, very seriously. In fact, in the section of the DEIS under potential freight rail impacts, the issue was completely glossed over. In fact, it talks about the Met Council having a freight rail operations coordination plan whose purpose is to minimize impacts on freight owners and operators. I would urge you to look at minimizing the impacts on our residents and our people here in terms of emergency response plans. There's really nothing in this document that talks about how first responders would respond to a catastrophic event involving ethanol train explosion if that were to occur. We have many issues with the freight rail industry in terms of disclosure of hazardous materials. That needs to be addressed. What are the impacts during construction? You write in the supplemental DEIS that freight rail operations during construction would not be obstructed, disturbed, or slowed. That is a very, very significant concern when there's all kinds of activities around construction. And at a minimum, I would implore you to not be having hazardous materials coming through this corridor during construction. I think that rerouting is a real issue, and perhaps these ethanol trains should be rerouted. We're not saying in St. Louis Park, but maybe there's some other options that need to be explored in terms of eventually rerouting freight out of this corridor because, again, co-location was not part of the original deal, and now that it's being foisted on us, I think there's a myriad of safety issues that need to be addressed. And finally, you say in the DEIS that no long-term impacts of freight rail are, because of freight rail are anticipated, and therefore no mitigation measures have been identified. And again, I would implore you to look at safety measures in terms of negotiating very, very assertively with the rail industry about what safety measures they can take. And I can tell you, in our discussions with the freight rail industry and the legislature, I'm very concerned that unless really pressed, we will not see the types of mitigation and public disclosure and right-to-know issues that need to be addressed. Because of, you know, I bring up right-to-know because, you know, in conclusion, I will say that we have 20,274 residents in this co-located area within a half-mile of the track. And this has been known now as the blast zone. Citizens across the country who are dealing with hazardous substances going by rail through their neighborhoods are referring to the areas a half-mile from their houses as the blast zone. The state has identified 326,000 Minnesotans that live in the blast zone for oil trains, Bakken oil trains. And we have 20,000 here in Minneapolis, 3,000 businesses, 54,000 employees, 11,148 households. All of these people need to be assured and need much more assertive work done at the public sector level with the rail industry in terms of mitigating impacts and ensuring public safety. So please, you know, in the intervening time that you have to address these issues and update your SDEIS, we need to have much more information in this document concerning freight rail safety. Thank you so much for your time, and I appreciate your attention.
Thank you very much, Representative Hornstein. Next is Sarah Brenner, followed by Sean Smith.
Sarah Brenner, I'm from Minneapolis. The SDEIS is a remarkable document, more for what it doesn't include than for what it does. It was triggered by the substantial design change of co-location and the necessity of a tunnel through Kenilworth. Yet the SDEIS makes no mention of the considerable safety concerns triggered by co-location. No consideration is given to the fact that TCNW carries hazardous cargo including ethanol, fuel oil, distillers' oil, and hydro ammonia, propane, and fertilizer. Any of these, in the case of derailment, could cause incredible destruction, in some cases near feet from people's homes. During construction, the risks will greatly increase. Construction by its nature will interrupt freight service and freight infrastructure. During construction, there will be a 35-to-40-foot-wide and a 25-to-35-foot-deep tunnel that runs mere feet from the freight, and at a time when there will be no crash walls. The geometry of the corridor at the pinch point is 57 feet, and a 35-to-40-foot-wide pit dug for the tunnel that leaves 17 to 22 feet for the freight train and a buffer to the red townhomes. That means that ethanol trains, called bomb trains, will be perched on the edge of construction pit near feet from the edge. If there were to be a derailment, those cars would fall into the construction pit in a domino-like fashion. Yet there's nothing in the SDEIS that even mentions risks of running daily ethanol unit trains that can contain 10,000 tons of ethanol perched immediately adjacent to a deep pit prior to putting in a crash wall. Am I missing something that anyone considered this? Additionally, during construction, there would be no access for the firefighting equipment in case of derailment. If this project is to move forward minimally during construction, all hazmat must be routed out of Kenilworth. Awareness of the danger of oil and ethanol trains has come into citizens' consciousness. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Sean Smith, followed by Art Higginbotham.
Good evening, Met Council members. My name is Sean Smith, and I live at 2420 West 24th Street in Kenwood neighborhood. There's two things I want to talk about in the SDEIS due to limited time. The first is cost. And in the SDEIS, I don't think we feel very confident in the cost that's expressed. The blue line went from 400 million to 750 million. The green line went from 840 to about a billion. What will Southwest Rail really, really cost us? Because in the SDEIS, we still don't know what the cost coming will be, and we also don't know if it's a valid document because we don't know what is coming out of what's in the SDEIS within the corridor. I'm also here because Kenwood residents have been continually actively engaged in this process with little responsiveness from the Met Council. And why do I feel that way? Well, that's issue number two is co-location. We somehow ended up right back where we didn't want to be. An SDEIS of co-location, frankly, we're pretty freaked out about it. So 25 feet, I actually brought a team measure, I don't think I needed, because basically from where I'm standing to the back of the room, that's center rail to center rail. This is the distance of the separation of the two lines. Because we didn't move freight rail, or should I call it ethanol rail? You cut the north tunnel, so that now puts them at grade, which we didn't want, and the absolute co-location deal breaker, which was brought upon us by a historic foot plot by our mayor. If there is a derailment, the space that separates the tonnage of ethanol from high-voltage wires is a potential catastrophe, and we really ask, we urge you, please, relook at this line. Please, relook at this alignment, the cost and the danger. Please reconsider this group. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Art Higginbotham, and followed by Bob Rockway.
Good evening, Kenilworthers. I am a former resident of 3431 St. Louis Avenue. I moved to St. Paul in light of the co-location proposal for Southwest Light Rail. I move because I share with Representative Hornstein the feeling that co-location of freight rail and light rail was ignoring construction for a permanent basis is a severe personal threat. And I have to say, I feel sorry for those who will remain in the corridor if this proposal I've looked through the executive summary of the DIS, SDEIS, and I find that it's not very specific, which means that we're down to the final DEIS to get specific input of the citizenry to the proposals. One example, the tunnels proposed for the Kenilworth corridor would generate a good bit of noise. They'll have 90 decibel fans to pump air out of the tunnels. And I lived 100 feet from the tracks. That would have been a serious disturbance to reside there and live with that. But the overriding factor, as Representative Hornstein put it out, is the potential for a derailment and explosion of the magnitude that killed 47 people in Lake McCantig, Quebec two years ago, and 24 derailments in the past year. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bob Rockway, and then John Smorak.
My name is Bob Rockway, and I live in the Calhoun Isles High Rise. And I'm concerned about the effects of the LRT vibration on our condo complex and the homehouse in the townhomes there. The EIS discusses vibration, but only for an at-grade train with a magnitude scale beginning at 50 feet minimum distance. In our case, the train will be in a tunnel where the ground transfers vibration much stronger than in air, and the distance between our foundation and the tunnel wall is less than four feet. The EIS does not come close to recognize the potential vibration problems with our condo complex. The mitigation must be extraordinary to avoid livability problems. The noise levels discussed in the EIS do not address the fact that noise is amplified the higher the resonant, as in a high rise. The noise generated by the LRT while running, as well as the bells when entering Westlake Street Station, could be extreme. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you very much. John Smorak. And next is Angela Ergrich.
I'm John Smorak, and I live at Calhoun Isles. I support totally what Representative Hornstein was saying. As a micro level, the trains actually stop in the corridor for hours on the time waiting for lights. Gas trains and electric 700-volt wires don't go, just don't mix. And so the probability of catastrophe is very, very high when the rail is built. There's also a huge catastrophe possibility during construction. So none of these issues are raised in the SDEIS at all. And to us who are living right there within a few feet of the line, these are very important issues and should be studied to the micro level, just like the trains are standing there for hours. And a gas train leaks gas, you know, they're not perfect, just like gas in the car, it leaks. So I really asking you to look at this in great detail. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Angela Ergrich, followed by Richard Adair.
Hello, my name is Angela Ergrich, and I live in Kenwood. I live about six blocks from the Kenilworth corridor, so not close enough to hear or see it when the line is built. But my main interest in this has really stemmed back to when I moved here in 2009, and someone sent me on a birthday cleanup trip, and I went into Cedar Lake Park, thought of it a bit, feel like it's a really beautiful, special, natural place that is quite unusual to have such a large expanse of peaceful green space right in the middle of the city. I wanted to say I'm a pediatrician, I've always worked in a public health setting, and I want to thank our Senator Hornstein for bringing up these safety issues. And just wanted to add one thing about the ethanol trains is that they are presently, they travel underneath the twin stadium, which is amazing to me. Maybe people don't want to look at that, but it's actually happening right now, and it's highly formidable. Or, and hydro ammonia also travels under there. From a public health viewpoint, we don't talk about car accidents because we try to call them car crashes because on a population basis, they're somewhat preventable. And I hope you see your important role in preventing future environmental disaster by planning this to the best of your ability to prevent the problems associated with co-location of these rails running so close together with hazardous material. I also want to say, as a bleeding-heart liberal, I'm, you know, often hear these stories of cooperation sharing breaking out, but I want to thank Bob Carney because he's a Republican who most recently did an awesome job investigating and tracking down unused money and having it recupused for the metro transit uses. And he's done a lot for equity to have that money used for immediate needs rather than using it as leverage to enlist people as the base of this program. He's, what he's done is really going to serve people. He found $30 million that is going to be used for good purposes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Richard Adair, and next is Aminie Foster.
My name is Richard Adair. I live in the Bryn Mawr neighborhood in Minneapolis. And I'm, I come to the mic this evening to thank the Met Council and staffers for all the hard work that you've put in on creating the SDEIS. It's really a big document, and I think the quality of the work is very, very high. I'm going to talk about something slightly different, the hazards of not building this line. And I appreciate the concerns that have been raised by many friends of mine who heard this evening, and I think they're legitimate, and particularly the concern about transporting hazardous materials during construction, I can really get that. But I think we need to take the long view. Starting in 1908, the first Model C Ford came off the production line in Detroit. Since that time, we've kind of used to getting around by car. And part of the reason for that is that we have, this has been subsidized in an enormous way by the federal government, building a huge system of roads and bridges. Now we're realizing that getting anywhere we want to go using the internal combustion engine is just not going to work. It's going to damage our plan. Some of us would like to live more compactly and to take transit. And the reason for that is not because it's a trendy lifestyle choice, but because we care about the generations who come after us. And I would urge you to take that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aminie Foster, and next is Mary Paddock.
Hello, my name is Amatu Foster. I live at 1605 Second Street Northeast in northeast Minneapolis. I also work at Isaiah, a faith-based community organizing group. I'm glad that the environmental studies, this is being done, but part of a healthy environment includes the access to jobs for people in North Minneapolis. I want you to, I'm here to encourage you to keep the Penn Station on the Southwest Light Rail line. It will give people access to jobs. It will make their community more healthy and more environmentally safe. I would also encourage you to consider, or to keep thinking about building the bus lines that we need in North Minneapolis to connect to Penn and to connect to the Southwest Light Rail so that Minneapolis can get better overall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Mary Paddock, followed by George Puzek.
Thank you. My name is Mary Paddock. I live at 2782 Dean Parkway. And I want to talk about the noise and vibration issues that we found in the SDEIS. We find it misleading and efficient in several ways. First of all, as Ms. Jacobson pointed out earlier, the whole point of the SDEIS is to evaluate the effects of the changes that have been proposed from 2012 until now. Therefore, the baseline data should have represented the noise and vibration levels of 2012, which did not include freight train. But the DIS, SDEIS, does use freight train noise as its base level, and so it has the effect of minimizing and falsely representing how much more noise and vibration there would be now compared to 2012. Secondly, the SDEIS doesn't measure the impacts on residences closer than 45 feet from the LRT tracks, but the homes most impacted are only 31 feet away, they need attention to. Finally, the SDEIS ignores the impact of construction. Last month, impact pile driving on the Trigg site, restaurant site near the Westlake Station caused serious damage to the Loop Calhoun condominiums and other buildings. There was so much damage that the project had to be halted, and the pilings had to be pulled out since going forward was deemed to be, quote, catastrophic. But the pile driving for Southwest LRT tunnel would take place as close and closer to these buildings and others. The SDEIS ignores this problem and gives no hint of what kind of remediation there should be.
Thank you very much. Next is George Puzek, followed by Susu Jeffrey.
Good evening, I'm George Puzek. I live at 1780 Girardia Avenue, South Minneapolis. As I was walking in, I was fortunate to find these earmuffs, and they say "Met Council", and I thought, "Great, you'll be able to hear us." Then my teenage son reminded me and said, "Dad, just because they can hear you doesn't mean they're listening." Even if cost surprises and lawsuits don't torpedo Southwest LRT, a fundamental flaw should. Hennepin County's failure to include freight rail in the project's scoping process. Required by the National Environment Policy Act, NIPA, scoping is the first step in the environmental review. It identifies the issues, alternatives, locations, and modes of transport to be studied in the transit projects. Environmental intent statement. Botanica County, in both its 2009 scoping report and 2010 locally-preferred alternative, failed to include freight rail as part of the Southwest LRT. Five cities then voted on this faulty plan. Compounding the problem, in the summer of 2014, the Met Council imposed yet another fundamentally different plan. This time, using municipal consent, the five cities supported this, but the plan omitted freight rail from the project. All these decisions were made before the draft and the updated supplemental were in place. Contrary to law, Met Council has limited the choice of reasonable alternatives and alignments. Reducing costs, studying freight rail in the supplemental DEIS, and reopening municipal consent are not sufficient remedies. There are two remedies. One, move freight rail out of the corridor and build your plan that's in study. Or two, reopen the scoping process and include freight transport in there, and then maybe there'll be another alternative. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susu Jeffrey, and followed by Nancy Green.
Chair, people, thank you for your time. I'm Susu Jeffrey. I'm speaking today for Friends of Coldwater. I do live in the blast zone. I've lived in Bryn Mawr for nearly 30 years. I remember when this project started with the PR, and it was an equity project. And now that equity has descended into busing people south on Penn Avenue and then east to Royalston, a proposed Royalston station. With all of the racial problems that we're experiencing lately, I find that a horrible plan, an awful use of language, and I reject that equity argument. I think that the tunnel with its 55-foot-deep solid steel walls along about 2,800 feet is going to really mess up the lakes, and I think we're talking about losing the chain. The last time I swam across Cedar Lake at sunset, I couldn't see my fingernails at the end of my hands. So what is this really about? It's about development. And with development, we have a choice. Uptown or Hidden Beach? Come on, folks. Uptown is a venue. It's famous. It's alive. People want to go there, and you want them to go two miles away to Hidden Beach? You're really going to bring in a bunch of people in that housing area in Hidden Beach? I see that as a real police problem. Just as this cantilevered artifice down 900 steps to the Bryn Mawr Station at Penn Avenue will require full-time security, it's just waiting for people to be heard and viewed. So I say uptown. Think, rethink this, start with uptown. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nancy Green, followed by Claire Mubeck.
Hi. I also live in the Calhoun Isles Association, and I live in the townhomes, which we are now referring to our area as the pinch point. This planned construction of a shallow tunnel scares us, and unfortunately... This planned construction of a shallow tunnel scares us, and unfortunately, we have little trust in the process for the following reasons. The structural aspects of our condo towers are unknown, as they were built 100 years ago as green terminals, and we do not have blueprints of the foundation to give to the Met Council engineers, despite the hours and hours of research that have been done. With only 40% of the engineering complete, we do not feel we have sufficient studies to provide us, the homeowners, with the needed information to feel safe, confident, as the construction will occur inches, not feet, inches from our homes. Noise and vibration studies have not been done on our property as we've requested, and we do not feel confident that the current studies accurately reflect what the effect will be on our property, and specifically, the upper floors of that building. Because we in Calvin Isles are asked to sacrifice our safety, our current lifestyle, along with two years of construction noise congestion and inconvenience, we ask the Met Council and the City of Minneapolis to do at least everything they can within their power to meet and assure us the needed safety net required. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Claire Rubek, followed by Bob Kearney.
Hello. I'm Claire Rubek, and I live in Minneapolis, and thank you for having this hearing today. I think it's important that we digest what the citizens are saying. I just want to highlight a couple of things that struck me as I thoroughly studied the STEIS. There are many things I heard tonight that I intended to say, and so I'm doing my best to not repeat. The first thing I want to comment on is that the STEIS states that one of three justifications for the need of the Southwest LRT is to develop and maintain a balanced and economical multimodal freight system. I would like further explanation as to why now we have a transit system planned, but the focus, one of three, the focus is now to justify a robust freight system. I could not find any further explanation in the STEIS. New point, the National Transportation Safety Board has concluded that ethanol is as dangerous as oil, and ethanol actively runs in that corridor, as we've heard tonight. People don't want to think about it. I don't want to think about it. I live there. It's scary. I imagine you don't want to think about it. The railroad that hauls it would prefer not to haul it, but federal regulations require they haul it, and there's no stopping it. It's as dangerous as the oil that we're reading about in the newspapers and that Senator Franken just wrote an eloquent essay on, and we need to treat it as such. And finally, I was surprised to find in the STEIS that the Met Council has requested the FRA, the Federal Railroad Administration, to abdicate its jurisdiction in this corridor where freight rail will remain, and now we will introduce light rail. The FRA must oversee this dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Bob Kearney, followed by Sandy Larson.
Hi, Bob again, Kearney Jr. I'm a registered lobbyist for We the People and the Formal Association. I have been reporting since May 20th on the decision of the legislature to eliminate $30 million that had been appropriated for Southwest Light Rail. The current total for the state right now is $15 million. I have a video online at YouTube talking briefly with Chair Donick about this yesterday. And essentially, I asked him, where are you going to come up with $300 million, and that is the 150 state money that's missing? Because Speaker Dowd, he told me at the special session, there is no more money coming in from the legislature in Southwest Light Rail. And Chair Kelly had presented it to the House, so we don't want to throw good money after bad. These are just facts. Now, we have to clarify that this $300 million includes 150 matching money. Chair Donick essentially said that, well, you know, if that money's not available, we're going to have to try to find it somewhere else. So I want you all to know, we're not $341 million off right now. We're $641 million off. This is a totally unacceptable situation. We need to freeze spending on this thing and go back to the drawing board and to re-sculp this process and look at alternatives. There is an additional $67.3 million that has been allocated to be dispersed by the CTB, another $10 million, $400,000 of that has been spent by Hennepin County. There's $67.3 million more that could get spent this year unless we shut this thing down and take a look at it. And you've got to keep in mind that if this thing keeps going on, and we spend more and more and more money, you start arguing, we spent so much money that we can't stop now. That takes away a reasonable alternative, and a reasonable alternative is no building. To take a look at other options, re-sculping. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sandy Larson, followed by Kathy, I apologize in the last name, Dieckman, Gilgen.
Good evening. My name is Sandy Larson, and I live at 2800 Dean Parkway in the Blas Zone. As a result of co-location, the current design calls for that south tunnel to run from just south of the Kenilworth Lagoon to just north of the Lake Street Station. The STEIS, nor any of the supplemental documents or technical drawings, addresses the fact that there is an existing sewer main that runs and crosses the proposed location of the south tunnel, and that will need to be removed and relocated. That force main was just installed in 2013, and it runs underneath the railroad tracks and the Kenilworth Trail between Depot Street and West 28th Street, which is right next to Park, Siding Park, a Ford of Minneapolis Park. And the force main consists of a five-foot-wide casing pipe. That's, the top of the casing pipe is 17 feet below ground level, and the bottom of the casing pipe is 22 feet below, and then two 18-inch force main sewer pipes run through that. The south tunnel construction plan indicates the construction pit on the diagram over there to be dug to a depth of approximately 35 feet in that very location. And the drawings don't include anything about the existing sewer force main that's there, and it's in the path of the tunnel. So that force main needs to be relocated and put somewhere else. There are going to be a lot of costs associated with this, removing and relocating it, re-engineering lift stations, if it has to go deeper below the tunnel, remediations of the park if there is any damage, cost of roadwork at 28th Street and Depot, cost of potential damage, cost of mitigation, noise and vibration. And I'm just requesting that you please be transparent and address this removal and installation, re-installation of the sewer force main line in the design of the project as well as all the associated costs. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Kathy, is it Dieckman? Sorry.
It's not Dieckman. It's Dyckman.
Dyckman, thank you. And Stuart Chason, next.
Okay. I'm a resident in Minneapolis, and others have spoken regarding very important emissions and risks that were not described in the STEIS, so I'm not going to repeat those. I'm speaking to you today because of a risk posed to the Minneapolis Chain of Lakes line category issue. I strongly question the land use designation of the Kenilworth Channel as category three. The STEIS designates the grassy banks of the channel as falling within the most noise-sensitive category, category one. However, the channel itself is not included in that most sensitive designation, but instead it's classified as institutional land use. The STEIS states the grassy area on the banks of the lagoon fall within category one due to the passive and noise-sensitive recreational activities that occur there, where quietude is an essential feature of the park. The designation of category one versus three for the channel appears to hinge excessively on one word, passive. However, quietude is equally and very clearly an essential feature of the Kenilworth Channel itself, and everyone knows this. And the activities that occur there, though peaceful, very peaceful, though not passive, include canoeers and cross-country skiers gliding swimmingly on the water or ice while those on the grassy banks become. Most significantly, the consequences of placing the Kenilworth Channel in category three is that both the obligation to mitigate impacts is lowered, and the threshold to establish severe impact is higher and harder reach. Had the Kenilworth Channel been accurately designated as category one, then the channel would have been only one DVA below severe impact. The difference in obligation on this work project office to mitigate the severe versus moderate impacts is critical. Thank you.
Thank you. Stuart Chason, and next is Janet Koby.
Hi. Thank you for having me. My name is Stuart Chason. I represent Kenilworth Preservation Group. Before I go forward, I just want to thank Mark Furman and the staff for doing this difficult work that they have been doing, so thank you. What I would like to ask is, I'm confused why we're spending $1.685 billion or $2 billion to do this line when the numbers aren't there. The governor originally said that he wanted to add the Mitchell Road if this light rail was going to be done. Now, you're talking about getting rid of the Mitchell Road and maybe one or two other stations. You're talking about getting rid of one or two other stations in Minneapolis, in North Minneapolis. If we cut those out, where's the ridership? The purpose of this LRT from day one, from what I understand, is getting people from Minneapolis to Eden Prairie, and Eden Prairie to Minneapolis. But if we're cutting out these three to five stations, the ridership, the numbers are not there. I'm confused. Even in your numbers, the new numbers that you have given for the three stations in North Minneapolis, ridership has gone down. Hope they get through. Hey, PG. Groups will get through. Ridership has gone down on those three stations. So really, there is no ridership in North Minneapolis because there is no residents. They have to take a bus from the other side of 55 to get to the three stations, and so there's nothing there. There's no ridership there. At the 21st Street Station, you're saying there's 1,500 people will be riding that every single day. Come where they're coming from. Franklin Avenue, they're going to take a bus, five miles, three miles, whatever it is, and people from North Minneapolis, where you're seeing we're trying to benefit them from, there's only 300 at one station, 300 another station, and approximately 300 another station. That makes no sense. There is no ridership at 21st Station, and you have it. There is no ridership at the three stations in North Minneapolis. And if you cut out the two stations or three stations in Eden Prairie, where does it benefit? You're going to take a bus to the stations. That defeats the purpose. Why are we spending $1.685 billion of our money for a project that doesn't make sense anymore? I never thought it would make sense in the first place why it wasn't going to the uptown, but it does not make sense now. I'm in favor of light rail. I'm in favor of to go where there are ridership. There isn't. Population isn't, the population, it doesn't matter where it is, it's just not where you guys are building it. I guess I'll leave it at that. Thank you for your time. Have a good night.
Thank you. Janet Koby, and next is Camille Burke.
Good evening, Chair Donick and council members. I want to say that I am incredibly impressed with some of the points that have been raised tonight and the way that they've been raised, and I hope that you all are hearing them and taking due note. I'm going to say, I'm going to echo some of the things that have been said, and I'm just going to say something a little bit differently, and I hope that you'll hear that too. The LPA that was selected for this row and approved by all five municipalities was based on the alternative analysis that said that in order to make way for the LRT, the freight rail needed to be moved. The alternatives analysis was kind of the fundamental document for this project. We didn't, that didn't happen. There was a new vote from municipal consent, and this STEIS is supposed to cover those areas that weren't covered in the previous DEIS that was based on the alternatives analysis. But what we're doing now is we're taking a temporary situation that was supposed to go away and making it permanent. We're making, so in a sense, it's a new project. We're taking something that was supposed to be gone and making it permanent. We're spending hundreds of millions, or tens of millions of dollars anyway, to do that. I just had a meeting yesterday working on the freight bridge that's going to go over the channel, and that's a big, heavy bridge that's going to cost a lot of money. It's a permanent fixture. So the STEIS needs to assume a basis of no freight for all impacts, including noise, safety, and visual impacts. And just on the visual impacts, I'm going to speak to a detail here. The STEIS is much different from the DEIS, and the STEIS has the nerve, I'm sorry, to say that there will be not a substantial impact in the area of the Kenilworth Corridor where we will have co-location and grade. The cantoneries, the tracks, all the noise and visual mess is considered by a consultant in Colorado looking at Google Earth and some photos as not significant. So I would, I strongly contest that finding in the DEIS, but just to reiterate, we need to assume a basis of no freight for all aspects, including noise, safety, which many of the people have spoken to, and visual impacts. Thank you.
Thank you. Camille Burke, followed by Kathy Low.
Camille Burke, I live at 2400 Thomas Lane. I'm in the Blas Zone as well. I have three primary concerns. The first one concerns the freight bridge that's being built. It's my understanding that it will be 50 feet from where the current track is going. As I walk that path, right now, the track is quite close to homes. I, in a joking way, say it looks like it's going to be going on someone's deck. I think that that is something that I'm not sure that you really realize, and I would encourage you to walk that and see where that 50 feet, that new freight train track is going to go. It will double the size of the current bridge that's on the channel right now, and that's a very, very large environmental statement. My second point, this is an old railroad bed. It's an old railroad yard. It is contaminated, 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 and you all know that. How far down is it contaminated? That's one thing I'm concerned about. When you dig that 50-foot tunnel, are you going to be disturbing all of that old railroad bed contamination, and is that going to affect our groundwater? Is it going to affect the water of Cedar Lake and Lake of the Isles and our whole chain of lakes? And my third point, the green line and the blue line, the revenue costs right now are 30% or less of the cost to operate it. What allowances, that was in the same talk I had impressed, what allowances are you planning on to make this financially viable? Particularly, it's real clear, we're not going to have the ridership. I'm concerned about that because that means I, as the taxpayer, have to pay that, and I don't want to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Low, followed by Michael Wilson.
Hi, Kathy Low, Minneapolis. Thank you. Despite the 2011 report by Hennepin County stating that there was 20 years of understanding that freight rail would be removed from the Kenilworth Corridor regardless of LRT or any other project, despite the city of Minneapolis's stance against co-location, despite your own DEIS conclusion that recommended against co-location, despite the fact that fitting light and freight rail into this narrow corridor will require massive tunnel portals, crash walls, large cement structures and bridges, and removal of vegetation, despite your own conclusion that this plan will have an adverse effect on the lagoon and the Grand Round's historic district, despite your legal obligation to avoid or minimize harm under Section 4F law, you make the literally incredible statement in the STEIS that the LPA with the retention of freight rail in the Kenilworth Corridor is the project's environmentally preferred alternative and would result in less harm to Section 4F-protected properties. I think that most people can recognize that's not credible. Your process has permanent Your process has permanently diminished my trust in government.
Next is Michael Wilson, followed by Eric Larson.
Good evening. My name is Michael Wilson. I live at 3439 St. Louis Avenue, and I represent the 57 property owners of Cedar Lake Shores Town Home Association. One thing I'd like to talk about first is the railroad corridor was just brought up a few moments ago. The St. Paul and Pacific Railroad first put railroad tracks through this corridor in 1864. We've had 151 years of heavy freight rail moving through this corridor, with the exception of 12 years from 1986 to 1998, when the Twin Cities in the western began running freight again through the Kennelworth Corridor on a temporary basis. So 150 years of running freight through the corridor. I'm concerned about contamination from the railroad use of that corridor. I'm also very concerned about contamination at the former Cedar Lake Yards, at the northern Kennelworth Corridor. You can check your Hill Night Press tomorrow for more information on contamination of Cedar Lake Yards that has only begun to be touched in the supplemental DEIS. So far, you've moved on a Phase One ESA and discovered that there is considerable pollution and groundwater contamination, but all the SDEIS does is list things that are typically found in former rail yards, typically found in former, in active rail corridors, including extensive arsenic poisoning. I'm very concerned that the supplemental ESA has only begun to touch on these issues. Second thing I'm concerned about before I get specifically to the townhomes is the residents of Cedar Isles Dean neighborhood have been asked to bear a heavy cost for having colocation go through our neighborhood, yet we are being almost barred from using the West Lake Street Station. Your cost cuts, the 50 cost cuts that you've advanced include eliminating vertical circulation to the West Lake Street Station. No, three minutes. Okay. Then I'll go on from that to talk about the tunnel, which others have done very eloquently. We're talking about vibrating down sheet pilings, which may or may not work. What I'm concerned about is that this is just hubris to think that you can build that tunnel inches away from the Cedar Isles Towers and only a few feet away from Cedar Lake Shores Town Home Association. The SDEIS does not talk about ventilating machines that are going to be at either end of the tunnel. They won't be running all the time, but they will be tested. The SDEIS does not talk specifically about the piston effect of trains entering the tunnel and pushing air in the direction, traveling 45 miles an hour through the tunnel. Doesn't talk about those things, which directly affect us and our townhomes. I learned when I was growing up that when you get it wrong, say so. I think that putting both freight and light rail through the corridor, you got it wrong. I wish you'd go back to the drawing board. Thank you.
This is Eric Larson, followed by Doug Peterson.
Hello, I'm Eric Larson of 2440 West 24th Street, also in the blast zone. We are told that the dangers of colocation can be managed, yet the NTSB has been forced to investigate one ethanol explosion per year since 2006, each time it finds unpreventable causes that will be exacerbated by this into alignment. And yet, the SDEIS does not mention these risks or the necessary abatement procedures. Here's a representative timeline from an event in Cherry Valley, Illinois in 2009. This train departed from an ethanol plant in Terra, Iowa, on its way through Illinois with 75 tank cars loaded with over 2 million gallons of denatured fuel ethanol, which is typical of what travels through the Kennelworth. Half hour earlier, the train dispatcher had received two weather reports warning of severe flash flooding, yet he did not advise the train crew as per the manual of the railroad. At 7:16, the train crew requested and received clearance to proceed into Illinois, still receiving no warning of the weather. At 7:35, the first of several siphons started calling 911, warning of the washing out of the tracks. At 8:16, the 911 center began calling the emergency call center for the railroad, and the call center in turn started making repeated calls to the local train dispatcher whose home was busy. At 8:17, when the train was 30 miles from the washout, they again requested a proceed signal, which they received with no weather warning. When the train did cross the washout, both the engineer and conductor were sitting in front, did not see the washout. The only reason they knew that it happened was because the automatic brakes were applied. They had to get out and walk back 58 cars to see the explosion. They also were not warned that there was an underground natural gas pipeline, and they were not warned that the... And investigators, sorry, were not warned of what contents the train were until three hours later. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Doug Peterson, followed by Arlene... I apologize, I can't spell those names. It starts with a F, I forget. Reed, right, next.
My name is Doug Peterson, 3315 St. Paul Avenue. I'm a CAT representative of Sidney. I've got two concerns, which I've got lots and lots of concerns, but most of them have been approached by other speakers. One of the concerns is the sewer line that has gone from Deep Oak Street to 28th Avenue that was put in in 2013. I talked to the head of the, or at least the PR person for that particular project. This was a Met Council project. And I asked him how deep that was going to be and what was going to be happening in the event that there was going to be a tunnel in there. And he said, well, the top of it would be 27 feet below the surface, and it would be able to be... I've got three minutes. CAT representative from Sidney. The person from the Met Council, the PR person, said that things could be taken care of, it could be raised aboard, or whatever. At that same time, in January or February in 2013, I talked to Mark Furman. He wasn't aware of any possibility of any shallow tunnel or any other kind of a tunnel. Now, as was stated earlier, there was nothing in the SDEIS about the sewer and what's going to happen. There's been talk amongst, from some representatives of the state or the council, that they don't know whether or not the tunnel's going to go above the sewer or below the sewer. I'm concerned that the engineers are going to wait until they get up close to that and then find out, oh, boy, this is going to cost a whole lot of money. Maybe we better run just right on top, colocation. The other concern that I have is the pile driving and the retaining walls that are going to be going into the corridor there by my house. The trick restaurant teardown and Tramal Pro installation of, or construction of a new building there was stopped because of the damage done by pile driving to nearby buildings.
I'm also a volunteer in a state called Park Watch, which has been around for about 10 years now, and we've had great concerns about park board issues. We have a wonderful municipal superintendent, however, who did not really start it. I have multiple reservations about Southwest LRT, but also about the construction process. Many of these have been mentioned here already, so I don't have to mention them. So I'll just say, I want to mention a special concern about the negative effects of the monitoring.
Thank you.
On their cars, to get the jobs, to get the outfits, to get the daycare, to get the grocery stores. The Twin Cities made a tragic mistake in past decades, getting rid of rail transit system and not building a new one. I would also like to say something on oil trains and ethanol trains. I agree, they shouldn't be in our cities. They shouldn't be on this line. I hope the Met Council can acquire some power over freight rail lines. It's high time that we, like other advanced countries, did our own control, planning, and regulation of these privatized transportation companies, which don't operate the same way than other developed countries. I'll submit the rest of my comments and writing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Captain Jack Sparrow, second, followed by Sally Rose.
I am Captain Jack Sparrow. I live at 3522 Lubbock County Avenue South, and I'm a candidate for State Senate, District 62. At last, all municipal consent hearings, I referred to SWR T as a billion-dollar moon dog, but that was really wrong. It's really, to do it right, it's going to be a multi-billion dollar moon dog. We may be cheaper by letting certain stations that were using the argument that would provide equity for people, but if we're letting these stations, if we're going to be making development shorter than it was before, I think we're taking very many of the benefits to people. The flaws in the SDEIS are obvious. The current analysis says that Southwest connects with the blue line. It can actually connect with the green line. How much do you pay for this thing? I listened to a recorded interview with the president of the Twin Cities Western Railroad, and I'd be able to talk about a lot of the other, about the ethanol and the oil and other chemicals that are being hauled. But according to Mr. Ryder, any chemical can be hauled on this road. It's required by federal law. They may not want to haul it, but they have to. Even chlorine. Chloride, of course, was used as a poisonous gas and went on it more recently in Iraq. So I think we have to be concerned about all the chemicals that may possibly potentially be transported along that road. Another point I wanted to make is that it turns out that the green line was built more with development in mind than with actual ridership and efficiency and speed. Now it turns out people can ride a bicycle faster, they can travel down the green line, on the green line. And so I think it's important that we not...
Next is Sally Rose, oops, sorry, I was pronouncing that, and I'll let Peter Venus.
Hi, I'm Sally Rose. I live in Red Mar. I want you to return to the drawing board. I think this route was number 29. I'd like you at least look at the other ones. I have two main points to make. One, it's unsafe to the environment, the water and the soil that was made clear. It's unsafe to the people and cars and skis and bikes and on foot. The railroad, last time I was at one of these meetings, the railroad announced they were changing the safety distance. It was 24 feet, and boom, it was 12 feet. Suddenly, it was 12 feet. A train could tip over, and it would be okay if it was only 12 feet from another anything. It used to be 24. Number two, any of these unsafe, unhealthy issues will be prohibitively expensive, and I think you know that. And I hope that you are looking at other routes, the other 28 routes that were considered before this one, parallel to your considering the costs for this one. I agree with the thousands of others who reject colocation. A tunnel is still colocation, and we demand that we return to looking at other routes. I also, since I have a little bit of time left, I want to, 30 seconds left, just want to say that when you refer to the bike path and the people who use it, it's really condescending to only call it recreational. For a lot of people, this is essential to how they get to work, and that should be folded into it. Thank you.
Next is Peter Venus, and still the last one to have signed up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, my council members, for your willingness to hold this hearing. Mayor Hodges, I work for Mayor Hodges, and she would like to extend her thanks to everybody here, the citizens present, for their remarkable politeness and thoughtful comments in the face of this project's transformation from what it was promised to be into a totally different project that it is today. I will share this experience with Mayor Hodges as a refreshing tonic compared to the collective amnesia which permeates the conversation that takes place at the Corridor Management Committee. At the CMC, they were saying it is time now for the burdens of this cost-cutting to be shared equitably among the five cities along the line, as if the burdens of this project have been shared equitably up to this point. At those meetings, there is no recognition whatsoever that the burden of freight fell 100% on one city. At those meetings, there is no recognition that this project was planned to be and promised to be totally different than it is today with freight relocated from the corridor. This is beyond dispute. Whether or not St. Louis Park acknowledges their promise, the fact that Hanefin County promised to reroute the freight is not disputed. Mr. Colby and Mr. Kuzak, Ms. Colby and Mr. Kuzak are absolutely right about their origin, the root cause of all these challenges. Southwest LRT has been a project devoid of accountability. Why did the federal government have to force the project to incorporate freight issue into the project's sculpted budget? Did anyone ever think there was going to be a solution to the freight problem which was free, which did not cost money? How much more has it cost the project and the residents of Minneapolis because the freight issue wasn't dealt with five, 10, 15, 17 years ago? If neither of the government agencies responsible for this situation are willing to tell the community, let the city of Minneapolis do it. You are right to be angry and frustrated. You are right. Your politeness in the face of this is entirely amazing. This is the opposite of what you were told this project was going to be. So if no one else can say it, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Peter, and thanks, everyone. That, the public hearing is done for the evening, so thanks, everyone, for being here. Really appreciate the feedback. You'll be hanging around afterwards if you want to talk with us about this project. Thanks.